I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Alabas?
President? Didn't hear you, dear. Didn't hear you.
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Folkins?
Here. This time, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda as it's been presented?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your name and then also write your name and address. For the clerk, that would be very much appreciated. And if you could leave your comments to three minutes or less, thank you.
Hello, Don Koshmider, Cadillac, Michigan. It was, I know the Clam River starts on Lake Cadillac and I've noticed, I don't know how it works, you know, raising the, lowering the levels, the rain, dam, consumers' energy, whoever, I don't know how it works. But for the last few months, it's been at least three foot low. And I don't know if anybody else has noticed that. That's kind of a bummer for us that live down river. I live out on Sarah Street, out past Camp Cadillac, out Boone Road that way. But I don't know if anybody else has noticed that, but kind of a bummer to have the river down three feet for three months or so. And then, speaking of water, all over social media, I'm reading about the water quality around Cadillac and stuff. It makes me want to test my well. I love my well water, but with that, I see we have other members in the audience. I'm going to yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
So, thank you very much for the FOIA. It's very thick, 256 pages. I would ask you put that on your website and share it with all your council members. The results are there and they are not good news. They're not to be described as that. They're terrible news. This is, not only is PFAS in the residents drinking water from their private wells, but also, I suspect, others have migrated, dangerous chemicals, TCE, chromium, solvents, whatever. The numbers look scary to just a layperson. I was able to connect some dots. I see that the Andersons are here tonight. The PFAS at their home exceeded Michigan's current standard of their tap water, more than twice the future federal enforcement level, which should be followed at this point. In fact, the federal government wants a zero number and they have a nine. So, there's been a total breakdown of health and safety for the community. Serious mistakes were made. I'm asking that you set an emergency joint meeting of the city council and the LDFA to address this environmental, regrettable environmental exposure to the community. Continue to ask for transparency, please. I'm organizing a town hall meeting in October. I'm inviting Eagle, EPA, you're invited, the Health Department's invited. This would be an opportunity for the city to provide information and education on these plumes. Could also help alert private owners that they should not be drinking from their wells in the city of Cadillac. The public meeting would also provide an opportunity for public feedback. The city council, I think, needs to take action immediately to direct a policy for your city manager and staff to follow the final recommendations of LDFA member Brian Warner and any consultants and/or attorneys that he's able to convince the board to accept. You need a change. I came here since May to tell you, your attorney sat here. They never told Chuck Barbieri that the guy's drinking out of this thing and you guys had a meeting two weeks ago. That is unforgivable. I would change your attorney on this, change your consultant immediately. And you need to warn everyone, maybe do that tonight. If you have a private well, don't drink from it. I predict Mr. Warner's common sense approach will also be welcomed by the EPA. Eagle and the Health Department, I trust his opinions. I know you guys do, you had them, you folks do. You had them on the brown field. You're going to get, I don't know if it's a half a million or 60,000, but there's some numbers coming from Mr. Warner. And Mac Alabas, who's here as president, how you doing? These guys work together. I know they could continue to work together and fix this. So, please do something to support your city manager to change directions on the board and also your staff. They need to take a different look at this. There'll be a date and time for the town hall. A media source has offered to run it. And you're invited and I'd love you to participate in any way. Thank you.
My name is Andrea Lilly. I live with my husband, my five-year-old daughter and three-year-old son in Cadillac on Division Street. I grew up in Cadillac, graduated from Cadillac High School in 2009. After graduating college, my husband and I got married and in 2017, we moved to GR for work opportunities. We always planned on moving back. We have a couple kids, buy a house and live like in Cadillac. We love it here and in 2020, we were able to buy a house on Division Street. When buying, I made sure to read the geological surveys that were released in 2000 and 2005 just to ensure we weren't buying a home with a well that had contaminated water. Since we knew the area, the folks who were involved with the city and the history of the area, I made sure to call City Hall to see how much a hookup to municipal water would cost. I was told base price, $6,000. That doesn't include private contractor fees, that doesn't include moving the soil, that doesn't include removing trees that are in the way. There's a lot of cost that goes into it and my family does not have the income to support such a change. So, since the well water is free, we decided to not go with municipal water. Having read the article in the newspaper regarding PFAs in a private well less than a mile from my home, I am concerned again. I am worried that our well water is contaminated. I called Mr. Deetland and he was so unhelpful that I decided to call Lansing, the Eagle office in Lansing, who transferred me to a Mike Jury, a member of the Michigan PFAS Action Response Team. In just a few minutes of speaking with him, I learned he, M. Partt, and Eagle have been told that there were too few private wells in the city to justify the cost of testing and possibly finding PFAs. With the recent implementation of the Audit Zone, I decided to reread the 2005 geological survey and in it, I discovered an issue outlined by the geologist who wrote it. Contaminants could be found west of Leeson. My home is west of Leeson. It's between Leeson and Houston. Now, with the additional information that PFAs have infiltrated the wildlife in Lake Cadillac and the Clam River, I am extremely concerned with the very passive stance this council has taken. My sister Audrey Wood is here with me tonight. She lives 2.7 miles away from my home. She is also a property owner and also has a private well that has tested positive for elevated PFAS contamination. She has worked in conjunction with Eagle and the Health Department to obtain samples, testing, and an under the sink water filter that has lowered but not eliminated the PFAS levels. My four nephews ingested PFAS contaminated water for years and they still don't have the opportunity to hook up with municipal water. This is concerning that Herring Township, who is years ahead of what we are, they still don't have water. How long are we expected to wait for you guys to move? I was able to speak with Mike Jury, well, I emailed him today. And he said that Eagle, M. Partt, and the EPA have met in Lansing today to discuss Cadillac in particular. And they have enough evidence that they want to look at more data to, and move forward with obtaining samples.
Okay, Andrea, that's the end of your three minutes. Thank you.
My name's Audrey Wood. I'm Andrea's sister and like she said, my home has contaminated water. It's been very stressful. I went through an entire pregnancy on that well water. My youngest child was on that well water as I breastfed him until he was eight months old, so. I'm very concerned about the future for him and for my other three children. I'm extremely concerned about my niece and nephew, along with my sister and her husband. I'm so disappointed with you guys. Move. Move. Do something. Help us. Please, okay? I'm in Herring Township, you guys can't help me. That's been made clear and I made calls. I asked, could someone help, please? Because my children are being poisoned. And I was told, no, it's Herring Township's responsibility, blah, blah, blah. So, I get that. But her testing, that's your guys' responsibility. I do not understand how you guys can go to sleep at night knowing that there's contaminated water for citizens of Cadillac. I do not understand. It is extremely disappointing and honestly shocking. And then seeing comments from your last meeting. I just, I don't, I don't get it. I don't get it. I, I mean, I know it's money, but we're not worth spending money on? That's how it feels. The most concerning thing that I read, though, from the last meeting was a reference to the safety limit of, according to the EPA, for PFAS. It's supposed to be a four PPT, parts per trillion. And instead of being worried about the citizens who have four PPT in their tested water or whatever, the concern instead was voiced of if the EPA was going to be lowering that threshold of four PPT and have it up to PPT, whatever, that was the concern. Not the people that you know have elevated levels. And obviously, there would be other people that would have higher levels as well because it's not isolated, obviously.
Okay, Audrey, that's the end of your three minutes. Thank you.
Please do something.
Seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close public comment.
My name is Jeff Anderson. I live at 618 Eighth Street. I had well testing done through Eagle and my numbers are nine for the PFAS. I went to the city with it. Jeff's been working with me, trying to get well done. Everything else, I wish it was happening faster. But our biggest thing is, why didn't anybody know? Why didn't they let us people know that there was even a problem? Being that they're, they're supposed to be monitoring the groundwater and such like that, the ground, the water in the ground and the well waters and stuff like that, as far as taking care of us in the city limits. So, Carter, as far as I'm concerned, you shouldn't even be here. You asked for my vote, I give it to you. You never returned a call, nothing when you got voted in four years ago. I don't know why you wouldn't come back and talk to somebody. I asked you for a specific thing and you said, sure, I'll get into that. And you never come back and talked about all the noise around my property with the factories. And I still voted for you and you backed, you did not back that up. Something has to be done soon because my grandkids were over Saturday and they were like, can we have a drink of water? We're like, no, we can't. I mean, that just, that's how much it affects all of us. And you might say, it might not hurt you, it might, but if that PPT is set so low that they want that gone, it's got to be effective doing something and we're double what it's supposed to be. It's, I mean, we're taking, ingesting 20, twice as much. And it's going through our skin, going through our systems, everything we do. I mean, now that I know that it's there, it bothers me. Me and the wife have both had health problems since we've lived there. And if we would have known about the water, maybe that could have cured some of them, knowing that that was one of the problems, you know? If you can attack something that you know about, but we didn't know anything about it. We assumed it was taken care of. I assumed it was taken care of back in the seventies when all this took place back then, when all that, all the grounds and the water was all taking, messed up back then. I was, lived there on Sixth Street at that time, before all those roads were put in. And there's still nothing, why are we still on a well? We should have been hooked up to city. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. The pipes are run underneath my house. All you got to do is go about this far and I have city water. So, and I found that out just recently, so. I would just appreciate if somebody do something. I'm done.
Thank you, Jeff. Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from the regular, regular meeting that was held on September 3rd, along with the minutes from the closed session held on September 3rd.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. We have several communications tonight, so I'll turn it over to you, Sandy.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the closure of Mitchell Street between Cass and Nelson Streets from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM on October 23rd, 2024, for the downtown trick or treat event.
I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Mitchell Street between Cass Street and Nelson Street from 4:00 to 7:00 PM on October 23rd, 2024, for the downtown trick or treat event.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the display of a banner from October 21st to the 28th, 2024, for Friends of the Library.
I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner from October 21st through 28th, 2024, for Friends of the Library.
Second.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the closure of Lake Street between Cass and Pine from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on October 26th and 27th, 2024, for the Steam Railroading Institute Fall Color Excursion. And Bob Matthews is here to answer any questions.
Bob, would you like to come up and say anything?
It's good to finally be bringing a train back to Cadillac after five years, COVID and everything else.
Right.
I would like to ask anybody that comes out to see the train to stay back 25 feet from the tracks for your own safety. There have been several instances around the country where people have been hit and killed because they were too close to the tracks and we do not want to see that here. I encourage anybody to come out. Once the train is parked, go ahead and take pictures up in front of it. But while it's moving, just stay back 25 feet for your safety. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Cass Street and Pine Street from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on October 26th and 27th, 2024, for the Steam Railroading Institute Fall Color Excursion. And I'm always impressed by the turnout we have for our trains in town.
Support.
Amazing.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. And that takes us on to the appointments.
It's being recommended to approve the reappointment of Miranda Grinow to the City of Cadillac/Clam Lake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on September 16th, 2027.
I'll make that motion to approve the reappointment of Miranda Grinow to the City of Cadillac/Clam Lake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on September 16th, 2027.
Second.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Mark Lagerway to the City of Cadillac/Clam Lake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on September 16th, 2027.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Mark Lagerway to the City of Cadillac/Clam Lake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on September 16th, 2027.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Jake Wallraven to the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority for a four-year term to expire on September 21st, 2028.
I'll make, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Jake Wallraven to the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority for a four-year term to expire on September 21st, 2028.
Second.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Justice Wallraven to the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority for a four-year term to expire on September 21st, 2028.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Justice Wallraven to the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority for a four-year term to expire on September 21st, 2028.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
It's being recommended to approve the reappointment of Michael Blackmer to the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority for a four-year term to expire on October 5th, 2028.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Michael Blackmer to the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority for a four-year term to expire on October 5th, 2028.
Second.
Councilmember Ingalls?
No.
King?
No.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
No.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes.
It don't count?
Motion doesn't carry. Okay, fair enough. Okay, that takes us on to the city's, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first item tonight is a recommendation regarding short-term rental enforcement. The request this evening is for city council to consider a draft motion that would essentially allow for my position to expedite the enforcement end in a legal way faster than I'm currently able to do tonight or today. And I think, just to keep it simple, I'm going to read the draft motion. If council is prepared to accept that, somebody could just simply move as read. Otherwise, you certainly feel, you know, feel free to change it. So, the draft motion currently is a motion that would allow the city manager to move forward with authorizing the city attorney without necessity of council approval to begin proceedings for a compliant, excuse me, for a complaint, including but not limited to a temporary restraining order and/or preliminary injunction against owners, operators of illegal short-term rentals in violation of city ordinances regarding the advertising and/or operation of an illegal short-term rental within the city of Cadillac.
I'd make a motion to adopt the motion as read. Second.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The next item under the report is a recommendation regarding blight elimination grant management contract. The recommendation this evening is for us to be able to continue using the services from MAC Consulting, MAC McCullin, who is here this evening. The summary is as follows. Cadillac did receive, as you guys may know, a blight grant, over $570,000 from the State Land Bank Authority through the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. This was to allow us to acquire the former Western Concrete Building and property and basically remove the structure and prepare the site for redevelopment purposes. And this, this is property that's located adjacent to the former Mitchell Bentley property. You might be more familiar of it, knowing that's where the Solar Garden is currently. And so, you know, the implementation of this grant requires some real significant administrative and management support to ensure that we're compliant with all federal and state requirements and of course, the successful implementation of the project. And the grant itself does provide that budget for the administration of the grant itself. MAC McCullin is currently our Cadillac Brownfield Redevelopment Authority consultant, has provided oversight and management to the Mitchell Bentley Cleanup Project and many other Brownfield projects within the city. He also prepared the blight elimination grant application on behalf of the city for this current project and is providing grant administration and management for other, other communities in the implementation of their blight elimination program projects. And so, he's got some tremendous experience in this as well. And for those reasons, we are requesting that city council waive competitive bidding and allow us to enter into the service agreement with MAC Consulting Services LLC for the grant administration and project management services for the State Land Bank Authority Blight Elimination Program Grant. And again, MAC is here this evening. If you have any questions for him and Owen or I can certainly attest to the work he's done for us thus far.
Okay, so first, we would need a motion to waive competitive bidding and then a motion to approve the professional services agreement.
Exactly.
I'll make a motion to waive the competitive bidding regarding the blight elimination grant management contract.
Second.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
I'll make the motion to approve the professional services agreement between the City of Cadillac and MAC Consulting Services LLC for the grant administration and project management service to implement the State Land Bank Authority Blight Elimination Program Grant.
Second.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. We're all looking forward to moving that project forward, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so at this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment. If you do step forward, everything is the same as the first. If you'd state your name and write your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes or less, it's greatly appreciated.
My name is Becky Anderson. I live at 618 Eighth Street. Mary did Jeff Anderson. This is my good water from my address, if anybody would like to have some. Anybody? Nobody? Nobody wants to try our water? It's really good. They said, since you've been drinking it for 16 years, a couple more weeks won't hurt you. I disagree with that. I think I've been on it 16 years, it's time for the city to step up. If it was your house, your kids, your grandkids, you'd want something done right away. It's sad, very sad, like Jeff said, when your grandkids come over and they want water and you got to say, I hope you brought some with you because you can't drink ours. It sucks. It's hurtful. And their mom, Bethany, don't drink their water, don't drink their water, stay away from their water. What would you do if it was your kids? Nobody's got an answer? You're not allowed to answer? It's sad. But you can talk about blight and how you got $570,000 to clean up the Western Union Building? And that's great and that's on your agenda? And that's great, and that's on your agenda, but my water is not on your agenda?
Nope.
Has it been on your agenda, ever? But five hundred and seventy thousand dollars can clean up Western Union? That's a great thing. Why sit with toxic fucking water? It's horrible. Just sucks. Makes me wanna tell everyone, don't come to this city. They'll clean up a building, that don't mean squat, but they won't help you with clean water. We're supposed to be a town of water. We got Great Lakes and, but we got crappy water to drink, crappy water to brush our teeth with. You can go to your faucet, turn it on and brush your teeth, I can't, I gotta have a bottle of water to do it with. How are my pipes? Do they have all these chemicals in them? Do I gotta replace all my pipes, all my faucets, all my hot water heater? I don't know, nobody's told me any of this. I'm in, up in the air with what do I do now? And nobody's there to tell me what I can do. And nobody there to help me. And it's in your city limits. We need help. You should find somebody to help us. That's all I got for ya.
Thank you, Becky.
Hi, I'm Bethany, used to be Anderson, Neil now. Um, they've lived there for sixteen years, a lot of my childhood. My kids go to their house, they drink, used to drink their water, they can't now. You're worried about a building that needs cleaned up, you got a grant for that, you should try to get a grant to do their water. Can I speak again? So, about the grant issue, I did mention that to, uh, Mr. Dietlin, um, several months ago, um, 'cause there was a article in the newspaper about checking on the, um, land, the machine that cleans the water that was put in, in ninety-six, I can't remember what the name of it is. But, um, I was told that, um, grants aren't his thing to, uh, help us with our water. And I just wanna, uh, reiterate, um, the, it is very easy to place the responsibility of obtaining clean water on private well users. Um, but, again, it is extremely expensive to connect to municipal water system. And I have three neighbors next to me that, um, are also on well water, and they have, they are also unable to afford to connect to the city water. Um, so, while I have been told, um, by, uh, Mr. Dietlin that, um, we have the opportu, yeah, I mean, you know, we all have the opportunity to connect to s- city water. But, um, but, but not the poor people, because they can't afford it. We can't afford it. We certainly can't afford to replace our pipes, or our water heaters, or, I, we, we bought a water softener when we first moved in, because the water was so bad. I didn't even think about PFAS, at, like, at all. Um, it, I, I'm definitely gonna go home and research the retention of piping and appliances. But I do want to say that, um, due to Cadillac citizens calling into the Eagle and M Part, um, they are aware of our concerns, and while they move slowly as molasses, they are attending to, they have listened to us.
Andrea, if you would please address the council and not the audience, that would be greatly appreciated.
I'm so sorry, because you guys haven't done anything, the citizens of Cadillac, who are taxpayers, who elected all of you, um, who take part in everyday life here, and are probably unfortunately gonna die due to complications to a variety of different issues in the environment here. Um, I mean, I'm not expecting to have a super long lifespan. I went through a pregnancy in that house, um, my son's three years old, that's the only water that he's had. That's super concerning, and well, I just, I guess, I'd like to, to invite all of you over to my home, try my water, see the stains in my bathtub, in my toilet, in my sink, because I have to clean on a very regular basis, otherwise the stains that I am stained are pretty, pretty bad.
Okay, Andrea, thank you.
Uh, Audrey Wood again, um, so, uh, I would like to request transparency, uh, I would like to request communication with the citizens of Cadillac. I would like to question decisions that have, that are being made, including deciding to neglect this issue, and why there aren't more educated people working on this for Cadillac, other than the state officials, I'm talking about you guys, finding people who can advise you on this stuff. I mean, that's, I mean, that's Eagle's job too, but, um, I don't know your guys' history, I don't know if you guys are like chemists or anything, I'm not, um, but I know when I need help, I know to ask for help. Okay? You guys need some help to get this job done, to get things tested, to support your citizens who elected you. I would like to know if you guys are aware of how many citizens use their wells in, within the city? Uh, commercial, residential? Do you have any numbers on that? That would be, that would be interesting to find out. Oh, that's, yeah, that's part of the transparency, right, 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 um. I mean, Eagle's on it now, so that's great, but we didn't elect a Le- Eagle, we elected you guys, well, not me, 'cause I'm in Harry Township, but, um, I have lived in Cadillac. I, I voted for you proudly, very proudly, so to say I'm disappointed, and I, I went to school with your kids. I had your husband as a band teacher. I expected care, I expected consideration for my sister, who also had your husband for a teacher, went to school with your son. I'd also like to ask if any of you are on wells. I know it can be difficult to, uh, see other people's point of view, but I didn't think it would be this difficult with this issue. It's really disappointing.
Thank you.
Don Koschmater, Cadillac, Michigan. We're hearing a lot, lots tonight about water quality, it's a very passionate issue. If you don't know about the World Economic Forum's, uh, Agenda twenty thirty, their plan for humanity in the next six years, they wanna kill about seven billion people, they wanna maintain population levels at five hundred million. So they're purposely putting chemicals and things in our water like fluoride and atrazine. You wonder what's turning the frogs gay? Atrazine. I hope, uh, this can be addressed. We're not getting the truth from the mainstream media, all they do is tell you lies, so I suggest you get your news from Infowars. While other networks lie to you about what's happening now, Infowars tells you the truth about what's happening next. Visit infowars.com show and share the link today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment, and we will move to the good of the order, should anyone have anything?
So, um, I, I, I really hear everybody, um, the PFAS is relatively new on the scene, correct? So like the
No, no, it's not.
Excuse me, excuse me. So, like, the stuff that we tested for in the seventies, awareness of PFAS in the environment is relatively new, am I correct, Jeff?
Well, five to eight years.
Yeah, that's, that's what
And it, they've been testing in the environment for, and, and knowing it started with the firefighting phones, that they tested at areas and there was high levels, and then it went on to anything else. But before that time, people really weren't testing for it in the environment. I mean, maybe they were, but they weren't looking at what it did to, did, what, what it caused.
And now, and now, now we know, so, I would like, I would like, um, I know I've asked, I would like to have a spotlight with somebody from Eagle that could sort of explain what we are doing, because it's not like we're just sitting on our hands.
Correct.
And, um, it's not like we are not helping people, and I believe that, um, it, there's only so much that we are legally allowed to do. And, um, I believe, you know, that, and I, so I would really like to have something here instead of a public forums forum, someplace else, where this is all clarified for us and for the public as well, if we could get that rolling. I know we were wanting to wait until we have all the numbers and everything put together, but, um, people are afraid, you know, when you're talking water, people are afraid, and I understand that. And so, whatever we can do to shed light on this and to let folks know what we are doing, maybe what they could do, um, I would really appreciate that.
Brian, did you have anything to say?
Well, I'll be going to the town, town hall meeting that Mr. Barnett spoke of, 'cause I'm still trying to educate myself. And, uh, it's obvious, we need to get something going on our, um, I, I do believe we've been doing
We are.
what we can.
Yeah, we are.
But we need to do better, so, that's it.
We need to make it more explicit.
I like the idea of having the meeting here, too, with Eagle, so, we need to, we need to get going on something.
Well, communication piece, we are doing stuff, we need to do the communication.
Yeah, the education.
You know, there's really not much, you know, that I could say to try to clarify, I think there's, there's a lot of information regarding a very complex topic that, that goes in and around and over and through the local development finance authority zone that we have, in which some of this that you're hearing tonight, um, is in regard to, some of which is not in regard to. There are people that are on flat-rate sewers, which would mean that they're on our sewer, but not on our water. Um, I wanna say we have maybe, what is it, a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty? Hundred and twenty-two, out of four thousand accounts.
A hundred and twenty-two wells?
Yeah, out of four thou-
There's more than that.
They're on
There's a hundred and twenty-two that's on
Sewer, but not water.
Not, but there's, you know, Marathon Drive doesn't have waters who are down it at all. And so that would be one that every home is on the water, a well and a, a septic. So usually it's on the outlying, uh, fringes of your town, uh, that the infrastructure hasn't gotten to yet, that those people would still be on a well and septic, u- usually.
So, you know, council might say, well, why, why is that the case? And so, um, I, I can't tell you why whomever the developer was using Marathon Drive as that example of Marathon Drive, whenever Marathon Drive had that subdivision approved, wasn't required to put in a paved road, 'cause I believe it's still dirt, or to put in sidewalks, or street lighting, or water or sewer. Those are all infrastructure pieces that when we today look at allowing any area to develop, we require. Even going back to a number of years ago, when we had the, uh, preliminary site plans that went through the process of approval for the eventual build-out of Cadillac Junction. It calls for public utilities, sidewalks, paved roads, street lighting, all of which that then gets conveyed, the public portion of it, would then get conveyed to the city for future ownership, maintenance, and operations thereof. The lateral lines, when we're talking about water and sewer utilities, are owned by the private property owner, similar to a driveway that would connect to the street, would also be owned in the responsibility of a private property owner. I, I don't have our code in front of us, I believe we have something on the books that allows people to continue to use their own private utility infrastructure if they're not connected to the city's infrastructure, and if their, um, equipment is in good working order. If it isn't, and they need to do a full replacement, I believe our ordinance requires that they connect. Now, we're only gonna know about those instances if somebody were to call us and say, hey, you know, my well is kaput, or I don't wanna use it anymore, can we, you know, can we connect to the city? That connection, though, and, and the, for instance, example that was given this evening about a six thousand dollar fee, I, Jeff, it's not our connection fee, I don't believe, it would, there would probably be more of an estimate of what it would cost to actually lay the private line to then connect into the main that would go down the street. Um, but those private lines are at the cost of the private property owners. The city, uh, just like the driveway example that I was trying to give, the city doesn't pay to put the driveway in that connects to the public road. We put the public road in, or the developer puts the public road in and then conveys that back to the city. We've had special assessment concepts come to us in, in the years that all of you have been on, on council about, you know, trying to, you know, neighborhoods looking at putting sidewalks in, or, hey, what's the process of getting our road paved? It's, it's a similar type of situation. Now, here comes, here comes a twist with all of this. Some of this area that we're talking about is the local development finance authority area. That area, and I, don't hold me to the date, whenever it was established several decades ago, my understanding is that people were told, you gotta, you gotta come online unless you can show to us that you have tests that prove that you don't need to be online. Now, back when all this happened, nobody, nobody knew what PFAS was. Or even if somebody knew what PFAS was, it was nothing that was being regulated or tested by the federal or state government entities. Skip ahead decades to where we are today, it's my understanding that there are three properties within the LDFA area that are still on their own, uh, water system. Um, the Andersons representing one of those properties talking publicly tonight that they did go and test their well, and that their well tested at a nine, and the drinking level limit should be a four. And, yeah, I would agree that that, that's an issue. Now, I do know that the city is working with the Andersons, and we're working with the two other owners to actually bring them on, onto our system within that LDFA zone at our hour being the city's cost, so that there isn't going to be a separate, a separate fee. Much different situation versus anybody that's outside of that zone, outside of that zone that's essentially a superfront site. So, I, I realize that I may not be, you know, clarifying everything, this is a complex matter. Um, we have, um, uh, testing that we're doing, that the, uh, federal EPA has requested that we do, so that as they go through the process of telling us whether or not we can stop testing for a completely different chemical altogether, they first wanted us to also test for this, and so that's why we're doing that. Uh, but in terms of any kind of a mandate from the federal government or the state government, at least at this point in time, we're not aware of that mandate, that could certainly happen, in terms of any area outside of that LDFA zone. So, I don't know, Mike, if there's anything on the phone here that you wanna try to clarify, or, or fix if I misspoke in any way?
Uh, no, the only thing I would add is, you know, this covered under your ordinances as this, uh, restrictive covenant, at least for those restricted areas. And, and you're right, I mean, assuming, and this predates me, of course, but there was, um, there were exceptions that had to do with no proof of influence on the well itself. So, and there was a process set up by ordinance, um, back when this was enacted, which I think which I think, uh, probably first occurred sometime in nineteen eighty-eight, I think, or sometime in that neighborhood. So, um, and, you know, like you said, at that time, um, the concern was not PFOS, it was the other contamination, uh, that had resulted. But even still, that would not have automatically said, well, you cannot use your well any longer. There was a process for going through those exceptions.
Okay.
I, I guess my only question is that I, I think is most important to clarify. For the Andersons, Jeff, you're working with them, that's going to be set up to put them on city water?
Yeah, it was last week. I don't know. They were, last week we had arranged with them and then we're waiting for their plumber to contact us to hook, to hook them up. Back in the ninety-four, somebody actually had laid the line from the city lo- main into their crawl space. So they really literally have to go about ten foot and they're connected to the city. So back when they offered to stay on your well or hook up to the city, they chose to, whoever owned it back then, chose to stay on it, but make it available, the city wa- it's going to be the easiest connection we can do as soon as.
But that's something that can happen quickly.
Yeah, we're waiting for their plumber, the, the plumber of their choice to contact us and then at that point we will make it happen. So it's just, uh, you know, last week, we dropped off water to them today, uh, in that area because of, uh, because of the PFOS in there. And I said, well, you know, I thought we were going to have it done last week, so we dropped off water.
And what about the other two homes in the superfund area? Have you been working with them?
I have been, uh, one on the thirteenth street, I have been working with him. He's contacting me. He's going to see if he wants to do the testing and then turn around and try to have his well exempted again. Um, and then the other property looks to be abandoned. I did send a letter there. I've stopped by multiple times throughout the day and at, at night, I've stopped by and it looks to be an, an abandoned home. So, um, that, that, you know, I'm waiting to see if I can hear from them back. But those are all in the, uh, IC, uh, infrastruc- in, uh, in the area of the LDFA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I do remember a discussion in, in the community about, um, people were very opposed to being forced to hook up to city water because they didn't want treated water, they wanted well water. And I think that's why that, uh, that's why we have so many wells in the city. That's just my own remembering historically, um, some of them. That as things went through, they were like, no, no, we don't want treated water. So, um, yeah, this is, it's an emerging, it's a quick changing thing. And I think, um, being as upfront as possible and, uh, as much information as possible to help folks know what we are doing, because it is absolutely not true that we are doing nothing or that we are sitting on our hands or just allowing this to happen without addressing it because we really are, the city really is.
Okay.
Close session.
Thank you. Yes. So at this time, um, if someone would like to make the motion to get us into closed session?
I'd make a motion adjourned to closed session and consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by statute under MCL fifteen dot two six eight H specifically identified as an attorney client privilege, written legal opinion, invite Adam Ojepka, Director of Public Safety.
Support. House Member Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Schippers?
Yes.
Alaba?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.